Okay, it is 6:30. Do we need a few minutes to?
I get it.
You got it? Okay. So, good evening. It is 6:30 PM and I will call to order the Tuesday, August 6th, City Council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Eber?
Here.
Counselor Holan?
Still a little wet, but I'm here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Yeah.
Counselor McGuire?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is a presentation from Arapahoe County, but, oh, and there she is!
Perfect time.
We run things really fast around here, Carrie. This is Commissioner Warren Gully, and is Michelle Halsted also with you, or?
No, she is not.
Okay, so Commissioner Warren Gully, thank you.
Well, thank you, and my apologies for rushing in and being on the spot, so I'll catch my breath a few minutes here.
Take a moment.
Mayor Brown, tell me, how many minutes do I have here so I can keep on time? I don't know that we had a time allotted. Is 10 minutes good, 15 minutes? That's fine, that's fine, that's great. Well, thank you very, very much for your time on this evening's agenda. My name is Carrie Warren Gully, and I'm one of the county commissioners in Arapahoe County, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about, let's see here, am I gonna click down here? New technology always. There we go. To talk about a little bit about the state of our budget in Arapahoe County, how we partner with you all, and to try to answer a few questions that you all might have for me at the end. So, as I said, really, the state of our budget is talking about how do we provide essential services to the 656,000 residents that live in Arapahoe County, including the residents here in Cherry Hills Village. Believe it or not, Arapahoe County is the third-largest county in the state right now, and by 2030, we are expected to be the largest and most populous. And so, that creates some very interesting challenges for us in Arapahoe County, and because we have one of the lowest tax rates on the front range, as well as the fact that we are still constrained and restricted by Tabor, we are having some difficulty keeping up with this growth in population, and also the growth of needs of our residents in Arapahoe County. So, really, for $500,000, a few things here, the sheriff's office, and the thousands of calls that we get from them, the number of lane miles that we need to provide maintenance for with our public works, as well as the work that we do with our human services department, in conjunction with a lot of the work that you all do, as well as our school districts, and providing services for folks who are potentially in a vulnerable situation in their lives. The county really pretty much relies on property taxes. That is our bread and butter, and I know that's a little different than cities, but we do mainly work on property taxes. There's a few exceptions to that, but mostly property taxes. And if you take a look at how your total tax bill looks, and this is part of the problem that we're running into, is that when someone writes a big fat check to Arapahoe County for their property taxes, they're making the assumption that Arapahoe County is keeping all of that, and you can see that that is not really very true. School districts, obviously, we support them, we think they do wonderful work here in Arapahoe County, and they are the largest portion of most people's property taxes. Then you have in Arapahoe County 500 different taxing entities that utilize our treasure to disperse those funds. That's everything from our Parks and Recreation Districts, Water Districts, Sewer Districts, anything like that, Library Districts, Fire Districts, Police Districts. All of that money is collected through the Arapahoe County Treasure and dispersed out. So you see that we keep about 12% of the total tax bill, and cities and towns in Arapahoe County, of which we have 13, keep about 6% of that as well. So for 25 years, we have been really trying to maintain this balance of this growth with constraints on our budget. And last year, we did see a reduction in our mill levy of about almost 30% that we did not collect due to the constraints of Tabor. So, in Arapahoe County, we do things a little different. I always like to say we're unique. What we do is instead of collecting all the taxes, then realizing that we've over-collected over our Tabor cap, and returning that with a check, like the state does, or giving you a credit on your income tax, we actually predetermine the reduction that we're going to give people. So, for example, we should be collecting 15.82 mils for Arapahoe County Services, and this year, we reduced that to 11.2 mils. So you can see why that was about a 30% drop in the amount of collection that we did, leaving about $74 million worth of funding that we did not collect to provide these essential services. What happens when you're in a county like this, or in a situation like this, and you all know this because you make these decisions as well, is what gets deferred, unfortunately, usually, it is your maintenance of your buildings, your infrastructure. And you can see that we have quite a lot of money in deferred maintenance. That does not even touch some of our big projects, like our detention center or our courthouse. This is mostly road maintenance and small projects that we have on buildings. And as you all know, from the federal funding that we received through CARES Act, ARPA dollars, those types of things, we were very conscious in Arapahoe County that these were one-time funds, and we really did not want to be standing up programs with this funding. So, much of our funding went to one-time capital projects out in community that we felt were very worthy of the work that was happening. So, that is compounding a little bit of what is going on, but you can see some of the potential cuts that we are concerned that we're going to be faced with in the 2025 budget if we do not address these issues. Just to give you a little bit of a feel, I sit on the Executive Budget Committee for the county. We had our total compensation presentation today for how we will compensate our staff. We anticipate about $7 million worth of new revenue in the county just with keeping up with our health insurance benefits and that type of thing, as well as our anticipated total comp. That equated to about $10 million. So you can see, we're already $3 million in the hole, and that has to be balanced out before we even do any type of capital work. We also have some things that hit our budget that we don't expect. Last year, we stood up a new public health department that cost us about $3 million more than being part of Tri-County Health. We are doing the same thing with our judicial district, which we anticipate will be about another $3 million hit in addition to what we already have for judicial issues. And then, of course, we all deal with unfunded mandates that come from the state, which I'm sure we would have a lovely long-term conversation about that if we could. So, what have we done about this? We've really been out educating our community, talking with folks, letting them know what's going on, and asking them what they would prefer for us to do, and the levers that we have to pull. So, we basically have two options in Arapahoe County to deal with this sustainability issue. One is that we could deal with our property taxes and get out from under the constraints of Tabor, and/or we could do a county sales tax. We only have one sales tax in Arapahoe County, and that's our open space tax, it's a quarter of a cent. If we did another quarter of a cent, that would be about $40 million in additional funding for us. We tend to find that our city partners are not super excited about us looking at sales tax because of the competition of your primary ability to collect that. The other option, obviously, is to do nothing. The first two, take a vote of the people, and that is really what we're looking at and would be putting on the ballot this November. We are looking to make a decision on August 20th as county commissioners as to if we will, number one, put forward a ballot initiative, and, number two, what would that look like? These are just ways in which we kind of do shared services with you all. Obviously, our Human Services and Safety Net Program, we provide all of those services for you all. A lot of times, our sheriff's office will work in association with your police department, bomb squads, SWAT teams, emergency management, investigators, those are things that we provide from our sheriff's department. And, obviously, there would be changes to our public health department in which we partner with you all on a lot as well. So, I don't want to take up any more of your time, but what we are finding is that the top priority we're finding from visiting with folks and our polling is in support of us doing a debrus, or getting out from under the constraints of Tabor. And, as I said, we will be looking at continuing our conversation with community and making a decision on August 20th. So, one minute over, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have, thank you so much for that presentation.
Does anyone have questions or comments?
Yeah, Counselor Sheldon?
Commissioner, thank you for coming in today, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
In light of what's going on with Prop 50 and 108, can you tell us what the county's position is, if the county's taking one on those, and how it may affect the county and its residents?
The current measures that are looking to be on the ballot would be incredibly impactful to any organization that relies on property taxes, so that's any of those entities I mentioned of the 500 taxing entities. We are still unclear as to how this would interact with those initiatives if, number one, ours was to pass, and one of those was to pass. The second one would be, what would happen if both 50 and 108 were to pass at the same time? That would be very convoluted and have very complicated situations. At the county, because we are the collecting entity of taxation, there are so many timelines, as you can imagine, council member, of when does our assessor have to have assessments done, when can we hear petitions to change those assessments? All of that has an incredible domino effect that would be difficult for us to keep up with with those current ballot initiatives. If we were to put forward a debrus on our ballot, we do have language that would give us the ability to continue our debrus regardless of what happens with both of those measures. So that language is in the debrus question, if that's what we go forward with. It's very difficult, and I know we all hate to hear this, but there could potentially be a special session. That will be decided by Friday, is my understanding, and we'll go from there. It's very, very convoluted.
One of them doesn't even have all the required signatures yet, I don't think, though. One does, one doesn't, I think, is what I'm understanding.
I'm unsure of that. My understanding was that both did, but keeping up with it has been interesting. But I will say that both of those measures are incredibly impactful. I'm most concerned, as a past school board member, of the impact that it would have on our schools, as well as the county.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone other comments or questions? What is the timeline for the county for deciding?
So, thank you for that question. First of all, I will direct you that we do have a website, acbudget.com, which has a lot of answers to questions if people in the community reach out to you. Have them certainly get in touch with me, or they can go to this website. We will be deciding on August 20th if we go forward with something and what that would look like, and then that would be on the ballot in November. Once we make that decision, if we do move forward with something, then a citizens committee would be stood up to try to get out there and have further education and conversation with community. What I would say is, what is most helpful for us is, as our towns and cities and partners in this, we would love to hear if you have concerns. We would love to have the ability to count on you for support. I know sometimes that's difficult. We will be having some, you know, information that we can share with folks to put on their websites if they can, or in their newsletters, that would be, you know, a fairly neutral statement of what this means and what it would mean to our residents in each of the cities. So, we'll have lots of ways in which organizations and folks can be supportive, or be on advisory committee and those types of things.
Thank you. So, certainly here in Cherry Hills Village, we're almost completely driven by property tax as well. So, we do have a sales tax, but it's only for a handful of businesses. So, we can relate to having that as your primary revenue source. So, thank you. I know it's been a very thoughtful process from the Board of County Commissioners. A lot of work and effort input has gone into it, so don't envy your position.
Thank you very much. And as I said, if you have people reach out to you, please refer them to myself or any of the other commissioners, and we're happy to talk with folks. And thank you for your time this evening. I know you have a busy agenda.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks so much.
Next up is audience participation. Thank you. First up, so just to go over audience participation, when you come to the microphone, you'll have five minutes to address the council about anything that you'd like to address. State your name and address for the record. We like to ask that it's very respectful and doesn't interrupt the conduction of the meeting, and I think that's about it. So, the first person up is L. Nelson. Please come up and state your name and address for the record. No L. Nelson? Okay. Chris Lawand.
So, thank you for giving me the chance to speak here. Chris Lawand, 2035 Eastern Anco Court. I am the president of the Cherry Hills Farm West HOA, which has 36 homes within it. I was unfortunately not able to attend the July meeting, so I came tonight, really not knowing what to expect. I did find out the outcome regarding cell towers, and that is the purpose of coming up here right now, to express some views. I will say that I've corresponded with all the council at this point via email. I've spoken with a number of you. I'm extremely glad that the cellphone towers are no longer on the ballot, but I know this issue has not gone away. At least, that's not what I've heard at this point. Everybody wants optimized cell service. That's not a secret. We had great cell services, I've expressed to you, Ms. Brown, Mayor Brown, until about three days after I spoke with you, for the last 12 years. Then magically, the cellphone service has gone out in Cherry Hills Farm West, so we now have 001 bars. It's the most peculiar and oddly coincidental thing I've ever seen. No one has an answer. No one could get one from AT&amp;T. It's what happened. Very peculiar. I would ask the council, I would ask Cherry Hills to take a look into what's happened. Anyone who has AT&amp;T service in our community, in our area in HOA, has always had excellent service. So I just went and paid $800, and I put in a microcell, and now I have five bars in my house. $800 I should have had to spend, but it's what I'll do because it solves the problem. It's a solution available to every single person in Cherry Hills Village. I'm very hopeful that this issue doesn't come back in the same form in which it was considered. I, like many people in the community, did not find out about this until June. I found this to be a simplistic solution that was put forward, and I'd ask that there's increased thoughtfulness and creativity to find a solution that does not impact the community, especially in such a one-sided way. I gotta say, I've heard multiple times from a number of you that this is free. It doesn't have a cost in terms of what people have to pay for it. I find that to be an incredibly erroneous statement. The homes that are anywhere near this are going to lose millions of property value. It's practically indisputable. Tens of millions of value is going to be lost. So the cost of this is put on a disproportionate few people in CHV. I find that to be wrong. Rather than spread out a cost to find a solution that works, that doesn't create health risks, that doesn't destroy the aesthetics of our town, that provides real solutions, and there's many. I spent more than half my career working in telecom, the other half working in sustainability. There's many things which I've heard over the course of this process which I find troubling, which are full of incomplete answers, and the fact that we even got to the point that we did should have never happened. It wasn't a fulsome process. I'm hopeful that it's a fulsome process, to the extent that this is taken forward and considered further. We all would like better cell service, not with the disproportionate impact that something like this would have. NIMBY, not my backyard issues, are typically brought by outside interests onto a community. This is brought by our community on our community, which I find all the more disturbing. I've been a resident here since 2011. I cherish the time that I have here. My family, my kids have grown up here. My house faces Woody Hollow Park. Like other residents that are in all of my community, and then very close to the park, this would have a massive impact. One question I have for the council that I would like to have answered, because I've heard the answer definitively from a number of you, but I haven't been able to receive a response back in writing, is if there is a floodplain defined by the federal government, will that take the cell tower issue off of being possible in that floodplain, that 100-year floodplain?
So, public comment is, sorry, is just an opportunity to comment. It's not a dialogue because we're restricted by open meeting laws to discussing things that are on the agenda. So, certainly that question can be presented, and we can have someone follow-up, but we can't respond.
I'm formally presenting it. If you all can respond to that in some form, in fashion, I would appreciate it. I've heard a number of you say, "We would not present, we would not build in a floodplain." I don't know if it's against the charter, the master plan, whatever the definitive documentation is. I'd like to have that confirmed that that's the case, because 90% of Woody Hollow is in that floodplain. And if you go sit where you were planning on putting the cell tower, that's a lower elevation than the rest of the floodplain. That's why I'd like to have the question answered. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up, but I do see other people in the audience. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak and didn't have an opportunity? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to reports from members of city boards and commissions. I don't see any present. And then next is the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda? Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to unfinished business, or, sorry, new business. Council Bill 4, Series 2024, to rezone a parcel of land owned by the Cherry Hills Country Club, legally described as Lot 1 of the Carmel Lane subdivision, Lot consolidation, from R3 to O1, and amending the official zoning map consistent therewith on first reading. Director Workman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. As was just read into the record, the next item-
As was just read into the record, the next item on your agenda is a request by the Cherry Hills Country Club to rezone property from the current R3 zoning designation to an O1 zoning designation. It should be noted that this meeting is simply to set the public hearing and public testimony at the second reading, where staff will provide additional details related to the approval criteria and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. For context, the subject property of this application is at the northwest corner of East Quincy Avenue and South University Boulevard. To the north is a single-family home. To the east is university with Cherry Hills Elementary across the street, City Park to the south, and other Cherry Hills Country Club property to the south. Subject property is about three and a half acres in size and currently zoned R3. For the record, the approval of this council bill on first reading does not approve or indicate approval of the requested rezoning at second reading. The approval on first reading will simply set the date of the future public hearing and second reading, consistent with allowing an applicant the requisite process and hearing opportunity provided for by our code. With that, the motion is on the screen in front of you, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Does anyone have questions? Yes, Councilor Eber.
And I don't know if it's maybe getting into the substance a little bit that we're talking about next meeting, but a question came up about whether or not, and it's R3 right now, and when they have special event tournaments, and they bring in, I guess it's like television equipment and things like that, are all of those uses that they currently use permitted in an O1? Or what would be the process to make sure?
For that type of an event, they would require the major special use event permit that would allow council to approve those sorts of things.
Even in an O1?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, or I would entertain a motion there to set the...
I move to approve Council Bill Four, Series 2024, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village to rezone a parcel of land owned by the Cherry Hills Country Club, legally described as Lot One of the Carmel Lane subdivision lot consolidation, located at the northwest corner of East Quincy Avenue and South University Boulevard from R3, one-acre residential, to O1, open space, parks and recreation area district, and amending the official zoning map consistent therewith on first reading, and set the public hearing and second reading for the September 17, 2024, City Council meeting.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilor Eber?
Aye.
Councilor Holland?
Aye.
Councilor Wheel?
Aye.
Councilor Sheldon?
Aye.
Councilor Blum?
Aye.
Councilor McGuire?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Council Bill Five, Series 2024, amending Section 2-3-40B of Chapter Two of the Municipal Code concerning the delegation of certain contract duties and powers of the mayor to the city manager on first reading. Director Farman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the first reading of a council bill regarding the delegation of authority for certain contract duties from the mayor to the city manager, which would amend Chapter Two of the City Code, Section 2340. The City Charter, Section 5.4 outlines the powers of the mayor. This ordinance only relates to delegating specific purchasing duties from the mayor to the city manager. In addition, per Charter Sections 5.1 and 5.4, the mayor is responsible for signing all city contracts, enforcing those contract terms and conditions, and operating as the city's purchasing agent. This, of course, is a daunting task for the mayor to understand each contract's terms and conditions, department workloads which may affect contracted service, and other possible operational considerations. This request is being made to provide additional efficiency and effectiveness for city operations. The city manager is responsible for daily city operations and is keenly aware of specific vendors, the city budget, and detailed operational processes. So, delegating the city's contract signing authority to the city manager also improves the overall timeliness of contract start dates. This delegation of authority is also a common practice in most Colorado municipalities. And this ordinance would also help maintain consistency with Section 2340 of the City Code, which outlines the city manager's powers, which, similar to the mayor's responsibilities, does include enforcing contract terms and conditions, as well as administering the city budget. One note on this recommended motion to adopt the ordinance. The majority vote with the mayor's concurrence is needed, or four votes, supermajority without the mayor's concurrence. And I can answer...
Do you actually get to vote on this one?
Yeah.
I get to, sorry, I don't even get to vote. I get to concur.
I'd like to hear that.
I had a question. 5.4 talks about powers and duties of the mayor, and then 5.5 and 5.7 talk about delegation, but only of the powers and duties in 5.4. And 5.1 talks about contract signing by the mayor.
Yes, there's another provision in the charter that allows council to set out procedures for contracts by ordinance.
Say it again, I couldn't quite hear you.
There's another section of the charter that permits council to establish by ordinance procedures for entering into contracts.
Is that in here that you gave, what you gave us?
13.8.
Yes.
What page?
Yes, whereas Section 13.8 of the charter authorized the city council to establish by ordinance procedure for entering into contracts.
Can you point me where it is in the papers that we have? Because I do better reading it.
Exhibit A, so it's like Page Three, or the Third, well, they're double-sided, sorry.
Page 41 in my digital packet?
Yeah.
41?
Exhibit A of this, of the actual ordinance.
Fifth whereas is...
Page 67, not Page 41?
Page 67, right here.
Thank you.
Page 41. And then about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, six whereases down.
Okay, my Page 67.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
So, 13.2.
13.8.
Yeah, okay.
We have a lot of different charter and code sections in here.
So, I'm looking at 13.8. The council may establish by ordinance procedure for entering into contracts, for purchase contracts. Procedure for entering into contracts. And you think that overrides provision that says we can only delegate what's in 5.4? Or are we...
I believe it can all be construed together that you can, and these powers are delegable. And what's interesting also about this charter, right, is it was established basically with the mayor as the executive person, and then a city manager was an option, and over time those duties have been delegated to the city manager per that provision. But I believe that you also have the authority, plus there is in, yeah, in the existing, sorry, what were you...
5.4M.
Yes, yes, 5.4M there. Let me pull that up in the charter. Yes, other duties, yeah.
May be prescribed by this charter.
Yeah, you can delegate other duties as may be prescribed by this charter, by ordinance or by the council. Plus, there's also the provision that the city manager enforces all terms and conditions, and I, wait a second, I was looking for something else.
I always thought that if you have a clause that is specific as opposed to a general, the specific overrides the general. Am I...
Well, but also, you are able to delegate to the city manager other duties as may be prescribed by the ordinance or by the council. So, that is specifically in the delegable authority.
Everything but presiding over the council meetings.
Right.
Yeah, no, I saw.
And there's also another way to interpret that. Mayor shall sign, and that could, that is also interpretable as anything that the council approves that is binding the city, that the mayor performs the signatory of anything that council tells them to do, that it's almost a mandate, not a restriction, just for further analysis.
If we didn't have them broken out so specifically and separately, this wouldn't bother me so much, but I'm not sure I agree with you.
Wouldn't one of the other things, though, is one of the other things in 5.4 is to act as the purchasing agent for the city?
Yes.
And the point is, is that if you're acting as the purchase agency, purchasing agent, you've been delegated that power, you are binding the city. The signature is really perfunctory at that point.
I agree. Councilor Holland.
Any other attorneys on the council want to weigh in?
No. I would weigh in, except that I believe our council is over, sitting over there as the city attorney.
Well, and even below the purchasing agent is the obtain services required by the city. I mean, I think collectively, there's a lot of support in this charter for this ordinance.
So, I do, I understand Councilor McGuire's sort of technical interpretation issue. Is there anyone who has a conceptual concern about that, about having the city manager sign the contracts?
No. Okay, so, yeah, I guess I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill Five, Series 2024, amending Section 2-3-40B of Chapter Two of the Municipal Code concerning the delegation of certain contract duties and powers of the mayor to the city manager on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilor Eber?
Aye.
Councilor Holland?
Aye.
Councilor Wheel?
Aye.
Councilor Sheldon?
Aye.
Councilor Blum?
Aye.
Councilor McGuire?
Nay.
And I concur. I think that's my first time in almost two years. Okay, Resolution 14, Series 2024, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Arapahoe regarding 2024 grant of Arapahoe County Open Space Program funds for Quincy Farm Pond Habitat improvements. Manager Black.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, I'm gonna lead with, I'm so happy we got this grant. But for the formal presentation, as you all know, we have a 1930s irrigation pond adjacent to the Highline Canal as part of our Quincy Farm property. So, that pond provides important habitat. It's a stopover for migrating birds, but the pond is really shallow and silted in. So, we did some pond studies back in 2012 and 2017 that both recommended dredging the pond to make it smaller and deeper, and this year we identified doing this as a priority in our 2024 annual plan for the farm. So, we've been working with our city engineer, Icon Engineering, and ecologist from Matrix Design in order to create the plans for the pond. So, we will dredge it to make it smaller with temporal wetlands at the south end of the pond. The plan is to add a solar-powered aerator in order to improve the oxygen circulation in the water, and add various habitat improvements, so bird nesting areas, a bat box, habitat logs, and a rock jetty that will also provide some habitat. We'll also be replanting with a diversity of native plant species, and the pond will still be able to be used for irrigation to supply the west side of the farm like it is right now. So, we put together a grant application to Arapahoe County Open Space in the spring with letters of support from the Cherry Hills Land Preserve and from the Highline Canal Conservancy. We submitted that in April, and we just received word in late July that the grant has been awarded. So, we will be receiving the full $241,088 that we requested, and will contribute $90,000 in matching funds, which we included in the capital fund for this year's budget. I'm happy to answer any questions.
...so that its historic architecture and significance can be appreciated by our citizens, and it can also serve a useful purpose for hosting facility, as a hosting facility for programs. And the similar situation exists for the pond. There's no obligation to maintain the pond under the conservation easement, and in fact, in this case, the conservation easement provides that the city could fill in the pond and regrade the pond to a natural area. But once again, the city is undertaking to restore the pond, as Emily, you pointed out, to make it a vastly improved habitat for wildlife and continue to provide educational opportunities for public. I think it is a very strong demonstration of exactly what the city and the land preserve are doing to preserve and protect the conservation values that exist at Quincy Farms. So, again, I'm really excited, as you are, and congratulations, Emily, to you and the staff for all they've done to preserve this wonderful property for the benefit of the citizens of Cherry Hills.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, ditto to that. Councilor Sheldon?
Yeah, thank you. Congrats on the grant. It's great work. Anytime we can leverage these kind of partnerships and get a 70-plus percent grant from the county or whomever on a project, when we're only funding 27%, and we're getting 73% of funds from elsewhere, great job to you and to the staff for getting that grant in and getting it approved. And thank you to Arapahoe County Open Space, and Commissioner Warren Gully mentioned it. We should have thanked her while she was here, but that's our, that is our quarter cent sales tax. Quarter cent, yeah, quarter cent sales tax for open space. That's, this goes to stuff like this. So, this is, those dollars going to good use, and so I'm excited to see that happen. Real quick, from a procedural standpoint, and Doug, this may be for you, I don't know, but is it typical that we would budget the 90 for the match in our fall of 2023 budget cycle for the 24 calendar year on something that we haven't even made an application for yet? I'm just wondering, are we always proactively doing grant, when we do grant requests, which I know is not that often, but when we do them, are we always doing them in advance hoping to get the grant, or do we do them retroactively after the fact?
So, in this case, I will say, we budgeted for this project, and then the cost estimates started to come in far beyond what we had estimated, and we had used the, we had used hard numbers based on the costs to dredge the John Mead Park ponds behind us. But costs have gone up so significantly that it just started to gallop off into the sunset. So, we looked at our options in the spring as those cost estimates started to come in from our engineer, and decided to submit this application based on that. And I will say, then when you're going for it, we really tried to include all of the habitat improvements that would really be the very best thing for all of the birds and all of the amphibians and reptiles and things. So, that's what that process looked like in this particular year.
Great. Thanks, Emily. Good job.
I guess one other thing, too, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't say, but we also, in making this grant application, we also, I don't know if letter of support, but we received a positive letter from Colorado Open Lands in support of, support of this, I don't know how you phrase that.
Yeah, in support of the project.
In support of the project.
We received a letter from them acknowledging that the improvements that we have planned in this project are in keeping with the conservation easement.
Exactly. And so, we thank Colorado Open Lands for that, but that's helpful in support of what we've been trying to do, do exactly what I was talking about, which is to preserve and also to enhance the conservation value, so.
Yes, I was gonna say that as well, that, you know, that the grant application process was strengthened by the fact that there was a letter from Colorado Open Lands acknowledging that this project advances the conservation values of the property, and so I wanted to thank them for that and for the part that that played in securing this grant. So, with that being said, I would entertain a motion. Were there any questions specifically about the intergovernmental agreement related to the grant? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 14, Series 2024, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of the Arapahoe, of the County of Arapahoe regarding the 2024 grant of Arapahoe County Open Space Program funds for Quincy Farm Pond Habitat improvements.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank goodness for that. That passes unanimously. Reports. It's been a relatively quiet few weeks for the mayor since the last council meeting. I know everyone is getting back into the swing of things. We did have our national night out this week that I'm, or tonight, that I'm sure our chief will talk about. We also had our candidate information session for people interested in running for city council seats, so thanks to all the people who showed up to consider serving... So thanks to all the people who showed up to consider serving our community. And I will leave it at that. Councilor McGuire?
I do not have a report. I did want to congratulate Emily on the grant, that's terrific. And also to congratulate the chief on national night out, and so sorry about the rain. But thank you for doing that.
Councilor Blum?
No report, but again, kudos to Emily for the job well done.
Councilor Sheldon?
No report, other than to report to you all. I've already told this to staff, but I will not be here for the second meeting in September. I've got a work event I will need to be at.
Mayor Pro Tem Will?
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't add my congratulations, Emily, really fantastic. Meaningful amount of money and fantastic project as well. Dr. Cog, work session tomorrow, haven't had a meeting since then, so I have nothing going on in the District of note. So that's my report. Thank you.
Emily, you've already gotten my thanks, but the chief, successful national night out, looked good. Really, really exciting to see the attendance out there. I mean, it was, it was really, really good. From some old-time residents to younger parents with a lot of kids running around. So hopefully, hopefully you were pleased. I know, I know I was watching it. Thank you.
Councilor Eber?
I too join the city on behalf of the grant writing application. I know grant writing is not an easy thing at all to do, and we seem to do it quite well within your area. And the whole city does it well, but it's very nice when you are successful and you have a great track record on receiving grants from the Open Space Program. So I think that we've established a good rapport with them, and hopefully we'll continue to do that going forward. It's also nice to get a letter, at least in support, of anything that says that we are doing something consistent with the conservation values of the easement, and therefore, we can put that on our side for when it comes later. My report is that unfortunately, I will be out of the next meeting two weeks from now. And then that because I leave tomorrow morning, I will not be able to attend the noise roundtable meeting at tomorrow night at the airport. If anybody would like to attend in my stead, you're welcome to. And besides that, nor the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports from city manager and staff, and I would like to take this opportunity to welcome back city manager Chris Kramer from his-
Welcome back.
Yeah, exactly. From his leave of absence, it sounds like it was a wonderful experience. We're delighted to have you back.
Well, thank you, and council, staff, members of the public, I am glad to be back. I'm so glad to be back. I'm going to just get things started off with my first report as a follow-up to Councilman Neighbors' notice about the next council meeting. That, we will not have a quorum at the next council meeting. We have actions that we have to take by August 27. So we are going to request that we work on a process to find a special session. With that said, I'm going to just short-circuit this potentially and ask right now if you could look at your calendars for the night of Monday, August 26, and see if we can get a quorum for that night. Out?
I'm good.
Three.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Excellent. So we will schedule a special session for Monday, August 26.
Is that in lieu of the 27?
The 20th.
The 20th. It will be in lieu of, yes, so we will not have a council meeting on August 20.
So Susan, Earl, Randy, Rob?
And Katie.
And Katie, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, you're talking about for voting purposes. Yes, I know. I, I don't, this was, we're still kind of understanding the impacts of not having a quorum on the 20th. I, let us just evaluate and make sure that everything we need to do on the 20th, we want to carry over to the 26th, but we'll, we'll confirm all that. So plan on, plan on a regular meeting. We'll let you know if it's different.
All right, can I just, as long as we're on this topic, I just realized I am out on September 17. And I believe somebody else said they were too.
Is anyone else out on the 17th? Because otherwise? Okay, so we still have a quorum?
Yep. We're good on September 3. We checked that, because that's so close to Labor Day. I asked Laura to check on that, and we're good on that day. September 4, I mean.
So September 17, we have two out, but everyone else is-
We're at the limit, yeah.
Okay.
So, and it is good to be back, it's always good to be back and have another shining example of staff really showing their value, not a, not a figurative value, a literal value to the community by securing an amazing grant. And some council members referenced this, grants, I'm just going to take a moment. Grants are not always fun, and they're a lot of work, and it takes a real skill. It is art as much as science. And when you look at Emily's track record at these, we have to recognize the value that brings to the table. So congratulations and well done. I'm going to keep mine relatively short, though. I've only been back a day and a half, so I haven't built my list up too far yet, so it's very good to be back and good to see all of you. Paul?
No report this evening.
Just two quick updates. Thank you all for your kind words. I do really appreciate it. Movie night is coming up on August 17, right here in John Mead Park at 6:30. We'll be showing the movie Migration. And then, Councilor Holland, to answer your question about the big barn, we received the bids back for that project last week. We had two bids come in under budget, which I'm very excited about. So we are currently in our evaluation process of those proposals and hope to bring you a contract at that September 3 meeting.
And I do think the movie night, you should feel safe in coming, because there will obviously not be rain, because the chief took one for the team tonight, and saved us from any rain here in the near future.
No report for me, but I just have to take a moment and publicly acknowledge this community. So we had a couple hundred people come through national night out tonight, despite an hour's worth of rain out. There were, at one point, there was about 125 people snuggled, huddled. Snuggled might be a strong word, huddled together underneath that, that shelter out there, waiting for the rain to pass, and, and I could hear conversations amongst neighbors who had never met each other before about what community they lived in, and, you know, what brought them there and their kids, and so on and so forth. So despite the weather, one of the coolest national nights out that I've ever been a part of, and I just want to throw kudos at the residents here in this community as a whole. It's just outstanding, so thank you.
Thank you. Clerk?
Thank you, and thanks for mentioning the candidate information session. If anybody was not able to attend, the packets are on the website. We have copies, paper copies here at City Hall. Nomination petitions are due on August 26. So we still have several weeks when those could be picked up or downloaded and printed. And I'm available for one-on-one meetings with anybody who has any questions about that. Thanks.
Director Farman?
My only report is staff is gearing up for our city manager meetings and review of the 2025 proposed budget. So we'll have those preliminary meetings, and then we'll be meeting with each departmental liaison about that proposed budget request.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
We are adjourned at 7:26.
7:30, Dan. Don't say we didn't do anything for you.